Um attendance, I had three girls here, Brandy's here.
Here.
Colin, and Dave Kelsey's, uh, who's for missing the show. No, you're not, they're talking. Oh, he's heard from them. The, um, media agenda for tonight, if I can, uh, get a, um.
I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda.
Oh. Dave, did you want to add something?
Yes, on, uh, there's been a few people periodically, uh, that are complaining or, oh, is that like a report?
Yeah, no, no, I don't want to go into it though, you just want to add one thing.
Yeah, add something for zoning.
Okay. Um, but just one, one, one addition to that then is adding David Kelsey to underneath the, uh, um, Cato Board Liaison. Any else to add, okay? Go ahead, Brandy.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we accept the agenda with the addition of, uh, zoning administrator update.
I'll say the motion.
Discussion? All favor? Aye. Approved? Um, motion carried. Um. April meeting minutes.
I noticed one change in the draft that I picked up, um, it's on, everybody has in front of, front of you is page three, under the board liaison update, where we talked about the public notice post date, um, it was actually on March tenth, not March fifteenth, I noticed that, so I'll make that change, but, um, otherwise you have to see it on my other.
Adjustment.
Yeah.
Anybody have any else? If I get a motion to accept the. With the one. With the one adjustment underneath the, to March tenth? Second? Side of the motion. Discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Uh, public comments. Um, Dave, did you keep track, uh, three minutes? Um. So I'll open it up to public comments. Yes. Just state your name and township.
Ben Reynolds, Douglas Township. Um, when it comes to setbacks from the airport, I don't know where you guys are finding information on how to set such a thing. What I've been able to come up with is three, preferably four mile setback from the airports, and it's not just a matter of the planes having to dodge the turbines, it's the turbulence that is created behind them. The smaller the plane, the more they're affected by the turbulence. And the airport here gets a lot of small planes in and out of there, so that should be taken into consideration. Setback from lakes, a lot of the townships around are going mile, mile and a half for various reasons. Protect the watershed, migratory birds, and I think we all know how sound travels across water and the sound from the turbines isn't an issue. I'd like to see that taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Um, we do have, um, I think there's one, two, three, four letters that were sent to us as commissioners. Uh, and I just want to read those, um, to the public, just so they're duly noted. Dave, if I read yours first? I read yours alone, I'm sorry.
Yep, no, this is from Belina Freeman. To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter in support of the Montcom Wind Project. I have taught at Lakeview Community Schools for over thirteen years and I can see the need our district has for funding. Years ago, we were the top district in the county. Families are choosing to send their students to us over neighboring districts. Now with budget cuts, we are watching experienced staff take jobs at other districts that can offer more. With them, with them go our families and their students. Wind energy could provide the needed revenue to give the right resources we need to be on top again. In addition to the money, wind energy can bring to the county and our school district as a clean renewable source of energy. Big oil and coal companies are trying to convince citizens of the faults of wind energy in order to keep their profits. The truth is our planet is reaping the consequences of pollution, air, land, and water. When fossil fuels run out, what will the county turn to? Wind energy is clean and sustainable, bringing wind energy to Montcom and experiencing the benefits will put us on the map and set the standard for others to follow. Please consider the many people in support of this project that may not be heard over the loud descending voices. I believe these voices do not have all the facts. Please look into the research behind renewable energy and the economic benefit for the county. Be a leader for the county and pass a second ordinance allowing wind energy. Do it for our schools, our economy, and our community.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
All right, this one is from Pete Worm. To whom it may concern, as a teacher at Lakeview Community Schools, I wanted to write to voice my support for the Montcom Wind Project. Wind power is an extremely environmentally friendly and sustainable resource, will, will bring a measurable positive impact to the Lakeview community. Lakeview for years has struggled to maintain or enhance the funding of its schools. Recent sinking funds and bonds have failed to pass into the Lakeview community. Cuts have been made and proposals have been shelved due to lack of funding. Revenue from the wind project drastically changes. For example, look no further than Montcom County's neighbor to the east, Gratchett County. Since two thousand and twelve, wind farms in Gratchett County have paid over thirty million in educational related property taxes. That includes money for special education and vocational programs through the intermediate school district. In twenty twenty alone, Gratchett County wind projects generated an additional four point seven million in state and local education dollars. Other neighboring school districts have reaped many of the same benefits. Take Beale City for example, Beale, Beale City School Districts and Isabella County saw its first tax payment from the wind project this year. The payment from the project totaled over five hundred thousand and will be even more, over one million next year. Total educational funding from the first tax payment from the Isabella Wind Project totaled over one point seven million. Lakeview Community Schools needs this. Lakeview has been hemorrhaging highly qualified staff and exceptional students for the past number of years now, due to the fact that the surrounding districts both compensate their teachers more and offer a greater variety of classroom opportunities. Yet at Lakeview, we have seen essential, essentially beneficial classes like woodshop be cut. In addition to education, tax revenue from the wind project would go a long way to making the Lakeview community a more desirable location. Money from the wind would also go to parks, libraries, roads, agriculture, and other economic ventures that will increase Lakeview's overall appeal and status versus surrounding areas. These improvements would also bring in additional families and would greatly increase Lakeview's tax revenue. What I've conveyed in this letter only scratches the surface of the benefits that the Montcom Wind Project would bring to this community. With regard to this, I ask that you strongly consider passing an ordinance allowing for the development of wind turbine and the vicinity surrounding Lakeview. As a working member of this community, Lakeview desperately needs the prosperity that this project could bring.
Thank you. And then there's one from Catherine Anderson. As a retired professional educator and government teacher, I would like to thank you for your serving your community in these turbulent times of civil disrespect and disregard for common conduct. I'm writing in support of the Montcom Wind Project, being in Lakeview for the past twenty-five years, I've seen a lot of changes. Truffa used to be its own school and its own fire department. I remember well the closure of Truffa Elementary and how the fire department was absorbed into Lakeview, uh, both due to lack of funding. Lakeview High School had all, had to cut all of their industrial arts and technology program, welding, drafting, CAD, CAD, uh, wood, construction, business studies, computer science, technology, home economics, art, uh, a counselor, reading specialist, secretary, and numerous teaching positions, as well as the closure of the media center. I've heard, uh, up to forty million dollars could be generated for the education by the Montcom County Wind Farm over the next thirty years, according to the economic impact study by the Montcom Economic Alliance. And upshifted to Beale City School District in Isabella County saw its first tax payment from a wind project this year with a total of five hundred thousand dollars and received a million dollars this next year. You have an opportunity to pass an important ordinance that will affect, will affect past discrepancies, current disparities, and future causes, respectfully yours, Catherine Anderson. And then one more, I got an email, Brandy?
Um, this is from Jamie Snyder, she's a Cato Township resident, she lives here. Hi Phil, unfortunately, I will not be able to attend this week's special commission meeting, I would like this read at the meeting. First, I would like to thank you all for the hard work you have done. I have posted to the Cato Citizens Alliance and Mont, Montcom County Citizens United through our possible airport setback of a two mile radius. I have had multiple non-pilots comment that this distance was not good enough. I have since reached out to three pilots for feedback. Two of them stated that this was not far enough. One set a five mile radius due to issues with turbulence. The other couldn't say a set number, but didn't think the original of four miles along the runway and three miles on the opposite side was bad. The final pilot didn't believe that the FAA would allow them to be placed too close, um, to cause issues with possible turbulence. I am hoping that we can possibly change this to a four mile radius to err on the side of caution for the pilots. I am also including an attachment of the Isabella County Road Commission meeting minutes, where there is discussion of the fact that Apex has yet to repair the roads. They have their lawyers still trying to get this taken care of close to two years after the turbines being built. Lastly, I am sharing with you a video of Carrie March. This is the lady that gave me the audio of the turbines, I played for the PC a couple of months ago. And next, Kyla Blough. This is a great video to show how bad this could be if we do not set a strong ordinance for the citizens of Cato Township. If the planning commission decides to move the ordinance onto a public hearing, I ask for the draft to be placed on the, placed on the Cato Township website for the citizens to view prior to a public hearing. Thank you for your time, Jamie Snyder.
With that, I will close public comments. Uh, next on our agenda is, um, Dave? On the board?
Um, the question we had for the solar, solar moratorium was, um, Todd said it was listed on, uh, March tenth, and then he was, didn't give them a date to release it, and then he says they released it on, or February, we approved it in February and they released it March tenth, but now, police power, does that have to be still fifteen days, or is?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
It needs to be published within thirty days.
Okay. So, we missed that deadline.
Okay.
Clerk said that he gave it to the paper and they didn't publish it, I don't know if the paper would dispute that. But one thing, I don't know if this could count, so we don't, you know, have to redo, but the minutes for the board where they approved that, did get published within thirty days, so there's like a one sentence, we approve ordinance, does that count?
They got published in the newspaper?
Yeah, they published them.
Oh, they do?
For the version of the minutes, so there's like a one sentence, approve, voted to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash one.
So technically, what the law says, there has to be, um, either a, either the ordinance has to be published or a summary of the ordinance has to be published in the newspaper within thirty days. So, if, I mean, I, I don't know what the minutes say, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the minutes and see if it's sufficient to constitute a summary of the ordinance.
Um, but, okay, but that could, but that would be the only, um, you know.
Again, and the other, the other question is, what's the remedy for that if it's published late? Um, it's been published now, so, I mean, the public is on notice and it's not like there was a situation where between the time when it was, it should have been published and when it was published, you got an application or something like that. So in my opinion, I would say that it would be effective, um.
March tenth?
That, yes, yeah, upon publication.
Like, yeah, so Apex coming and saying, oh, we submit an application between those dates.
Right, see, that, that's when I would be, I would have a concern is if, say, it needed to be published by X day and then it was published, you know, two weeks late, and then in between that timeframe, there was an application pending, or somebody submitted an application. That's when I would have some concerns with it, but again, then, I'm thinking, well, what would be the remedy now? The public has been placed on notice that there is more, or, so.
Basically, three days, or the seventh and tenth is all.
It was, it was three days between when it needed to be, okay, yeah.
So, so March tenth will be the start date for, it's mainly for solar because we.
Right, because we're kind of going for the one process anyway now. Yeah, I think it, it will become, I believe it becomes effective on the date of publication.
Okay, so, but you mentioned last time putting it on your calendar to track it for us, so March tenth would be, would be the.
That's the day it was published?
Yep, that was in the paper that day.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure, you know, I've got a copy of the moratorium here, but for police power ordinances, typically, it's effective on the date of publication.
Yeah, I think it says that, yeah.
So, we believe we're good at it?
Sounds okay. I think you guys are, I think you guys are fine, yeah.
The master plan update, when he went to the meeting for the township board members, the end of April, he ran into two people, um, at the meeting that specialize in, uh, doing master plans. He talked to Hunter, and he thinks his last name is McKenna, because it's McKenna land, land planner is what it's called, you know, have you heard of that?
I know McKenna, it's that firm.
Okay.
Yeah, planting firm, and I work, I work with them in other communities and they have experience.
Do you know Hunter that works there, or not?
I don't know a Hunter, but I know the firm, so, they're fairly reputable.
That's who he. That's who he said, it should be between seventy-five hundred dollars and fifteen thousand, depending on how much us as a group did on it. Does that sound like a fair price?
Yeah, that's about right for updating a master plan. And they have an office in Grand Rapids, so they're close.
I guess they have more northfield, Detroit, than that.
Yeah, yeah, and there's people out of Columbus, I think, so.
So I asked Todd to find out for him if he do, you want to come to one of our meetings to talk to us about it?
Hunter is the?
Yes. Have you heard any more?
Yeah, he sent me an email yesterday, last day. I've been in contact with McKenna Land Planners, they have two options for us to consider. The first is they could do a remote diagnostic review for fifteen hundred dollars, where they would tell us what we need to update, but they would not do anything to the current plan for that fee. So, that's just them listening, or looking at it and giving us a, a recap for fifteen hundred dollars. And what we need to do.
So I'm wondering if that fifteen hundred would be included, like, in the seventy-five, you know, the ninety-six thousand?
Well, the second one would be the planning commission could do a list of changes and updates, um, then the price ranges between seventy-five and fifteen thousand. So, that's our two options. The other one I threw back at him was RAO. There's a RAO. RAO Professional Services. Uh, when I was on the website, um, um, the village of Lakeview has used this RAO Professional Services company to update their master plan? You ever heard of RAO?
I have not heard of them, no, but.
And I, and he was going to get with the village and ask about that company too. And I don't remember the date that they did update their plan, but they've done the village's master plan. Any discussion, any more further discussion on master planning as a group?
I mean, that's, what do we think?
I mean, it's, it's never been, they had options instead of just putting all their eggs in one basket.
And that's what my concern was, is that, I said enough to Todd, it's like, well, you only have one name, I mean, nobody else out there.
I mean, that's, that's a big range to me, too.
It is.
It's nice to talk to somebody, maybe get some more information before you. Some of the stuff I've seen from numbers are pretty low.
Really? Leslie, are they?
I think that's fairly reasonable, knowing what I know of McKenna. Um, they're a big, a fairly big planning firm, meaning they've got, you know, tons of different planners and they don't just do planning services, they do, like, other types of specialties in terms of municipal work, so, um, you might be able to find someone lower. I, my recommendation would be to maybe submit or ask them to submit proposals, um, so like for, for maybe RAO, because they could probably come in lower, but I don't know what their background and expertise are. So, that, that would be a way of maybe getting some more information from them, and you could submit it out to, you know, the general public as well, too. If a general firm is, you know, in on work, and be able to provide a lower cost estimate.
So, let's wait one more month and see what comes up with, 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 uh, RAO, RAO, RAO. Um, and then from there, we'll, there you go, do a little further discussion next month and see what can move on that.
When you said, when you said RAO, is that R A U?
R O W E.
Oh, oh, RAO, okay, I know, I know RAO, I've worked with them from an engineering standpoint, they do engineering work as well, so, I mean, I've had good experiences with them, but not on the planning side, so.
I don't know whether they're out though.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've used, I've worked with RAO Engineering, they have, I believe they have an office in Grand Rapids, if I remember correctly, but I could be wrong, so.
I just thought it would be interesting, or, you know, somebody that has done with the village, obviously, there's some, some background there. I thought was, would correlate pretty well with that, you know, with the area, too. So, so, and if you, we're on the website, the village, um, you can see their master plan, um, and it's, it's pretty dense, I mean, it's pretty, yeah, so, but. Okay, so food, so food for thought then for, for next, next month, and see what Todd comes up with then with. How'd you pronounce it, RAO, RAO?
I think it's RAO, R A O N G, yeah, and your.
W E.
R O W E.
Yep.
And as far as the website updates, I asked Todd about the minutes. He said anytime he's gotten the minutes, he's put them on the website, so.
Okay.
Okay, but he hasn't, well, the last one's because they were, they were just unofficial draft, so he didn't do any of the.
Yeah, I think we were talking Mark for, for some of the previous ones, like the last year. Yeah, he gets those ones up apparently. Technically, I think the way it works with the minutes is, we, Phil and Hugh told me this, eight, we have eight days, business days, to get a draft of the minutes. And then that's why we have to put unofficial on it, because the public can kind of start asking for the minutes, and we have to give them the unofficial copy, and then.
No approval, right?
Until we approve, so that's why I've been putting that on there, the watermark.
Hello?
Yep.
Dave, you have?
Yep, okay, for the permit for the month of April, there's a double wide and put in at one-one-nine-nine-zero North Lakeview Road. There was a, a home which went through the ZBA for variance, because the, they want to build a home and the barn's already there, and they want to put it behind the barn, so that would make the barn in the front yard. The zoning board of appeals did approve that, and that was at sixty-nine-seventy-nine Camerac Road. And there's a home built on seventy-twenty-five West Bellamy Road.
So, that's new?
Yes, and there's a, a whole barn at ten-six-zero-zero Cupler Road. Then on sixty-six-seventy-three Hemlot, they, uh, okay, they wanted to, uh, extend their lower deck, put a walkway, and put a roof on their upper deck, it's got two different levels of the house and deck. And, uh, oh, at ninety-four-eighty-five North Lake Road, um, at a barn, which you guys probably can drive by there, you see them building it at Main Farm. It's pretty good size, I don't know the size right off hand. That's it for, uh, that part of the zoning, but, okay, and there's, uh, something, uh, people have been, uh.
So there was nothing for the, the previous months, Jamie, have you heard more?
Uh, no, there was nothing, Jamie, the cap is a bit, um, um, for accessory buildings, okay, one thing, on, on the front yard, I've had people, uh, speak their concerns about not being able, if their house is, uh, I don't know, four hundred feet back or something, unless it's over five acres, you know, you can't have it in your front yard. Uh, unless it's farm, farm exempt, I mean, um, that might be something on, that's on, oh, my gosh, where is it? Number three, I believe it is? Yeah, in the front yard. A second thing is twenty-five percent of your dwelling, if you have, uh, say, a dwelling, that's if it's under five acres property. If your house is eight hundred and fifty square feet, the maximum that your book says is twenty-five percent of the floor area. About twenty-five percent, it's like, uh, two hundred and twelve square feet total for all accessory buildings, that would need to be a two stall garage. It, uh, eighteen by twelve is approximately the maximum size you can get, going by our zoning book. And, uh, I don't know if you, you following along?
Yep.
What I'm saying? Okay, if, if it's, uh, uh, over five acres, it could be, uh, one hundred percent of the dwelling. Now, if you owned, say, fifteen acres, I don't know how many people own lot, but, but it's not a farm, they can only go an eight hundred and fifty square foot building total, that's with all of them together, um. I don't know, if you guys want to think about that, that's up to you, but I've had people.
Are there any discrepancies between an attached garage and a separate?
Attached garage is considered part of the dwelling for zoning purposes.
So they can make that almost as big as they wanted to, in theory.
Yeah, yeah, um, as long as it's attached. And, uh, number three is, uh, okay, number six, there, uh, another thing that I've heard people mention off and on, um. This isn't just recent, it's been over and older, that's why I'm bringing it up to you, I would, just one person talking about it, I wouldn't even bring it up to you, but, why, might mention it. Fourteen feet high, okay, that, that's fine for a single wide, or a single story, like a garage, an eight foot high wall, and fourteen feet high with, uh, what would that make it, uh?
Eight twelve.
Yeah, eight twelve, but what if you're, you have a, a upper part of your accessory building, for like storage, I don't know.
That's so, I had to apply for a variance just because of number six, and along with number six, they approved me for over the twenty-five percent, because.
Yeah, I know, so.
I mean, you can't build anything for a point of, I, I would have built like a twelve by fifteen.
Yeah.
And I had a twenty-six by thirty-two.
So you're probably one of the people that told me how you.
Well, I, no, I, it was just the process of getting variance, but yeah, absolutely, but such a standard that nobody's going to be able, and you can't build, I mean, they don't even offer packages at DeWitt for a fourteen foot high peak.
So anyway, that's a thought you guys might want to, uh, think about that part too, so that's three different things there, that I mentioned.
Three and six.
Uh, my gosh, two, three, what, what number, two?
I think it's, I think it's three and the, under the, the top, at the very, very top, right?
Yeah, three on top, then two.
It would be under A.
Yep.
It's two, V two.
Then no accessory building erected in the front yard, and then two under B and six under B.
Yeah, we can, like you said, consider it for a future, but I just have one question, because there's this piece in the ordinance, it's like page thirty-four, and then, like, each district has its own little section and has a table, and like, for the rural residential district, it says, um, lot coverage, twenty-five percent, is that something different than the twenty-five percent?
That's twenty-five percent of, if you have a thousand square feet a lot, you can build two hundred and fifty for the whole lot.
Yeah, okay.
So the twenty-five percent of the accessory building is twenty-five percent of the dwellings.
So those are two different.
As long as it doesn't exceed the twenty-five percent of the dwelling too, so they have to go by two, in two roles.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's a little odd, I would, I would probably usually trigger the accessory structure, lot coverage, or, uh, accessory structure coverage based on the lot as well, rather than on the dwelling, um, that's just in my opinion, so that's something that you've been working on as well.
Yeah, you're not going to like cover half the lot with a building.
Yeah, and you could consider having the accessory structure coverage be smaller, obviously, than, than the, the principal building, you know, you're, you're probably not going to have an accessory structure that's larger than the principal structure, but, um.
Usually.
But you could trigger that off of.
Don't come with my.
Depending on the, depending on the nature of the use, yes.
Thirty by forty is definitely bigger than my house.
Yeah, but, um.
My house fits inside her, yeah.
But you could trigger that off of the lock, the lot, um, area, rather than on the.
What if, what's, say if there's four acres, or four, four and a half acres, would that be a problem for coverage, or would you go in different?
What do you mean?
Coverage, okay, say, if you have a, a thousand square foot lot, you, you're saying you can cover a certain percentage of that thousand square feet?
Yes.
But what if it's, uh, a hundred and some thousand square feet, say, two acres?
It's the same, it's the same ratio, right? So it would be bigger, it would be bigger on a bigger lot.
Okay.
So, um, it's, it's based on, the percentage is a ratio of. So, um, it's, it's based on the percentages or ratio of how, how big the lot is.
Okay.
So rather than on the size of whatever the building is on that property.
Reading through it, when, because I read through this a lot when I was building a pole barn. I think a lot of it was geared for the smaller, like, because right now it's technically just over a half an acre on the lake. Well, nobody wants us to build huge, blocking the views. Pole barns on these little lots, I, I get that. So it was kind of a case by case thing that I think they came up with that twenty-five percent.
You might be getting into the realm of health department too, or you just, just, you gotta have a well.
That's, that, yeah, I read all that and it's tight.
Yeah. Yeah, because anymore they require what, enough space for two?
They want fifty feet from the well, they want a hundred feet from the waterway, and they want fifteen feet from any dwelling for any of the tanks. My, my tanks are technically two feet off the property line from my neighbor, but they had to let me put them somewhere.
Well, usually I have experience.
Yeah, I mean, they, they've been good about working, but that all goes through the calendar, but, but.
I'm thinking like right now, I have to, also have to have a replacement area for when field fails, which they have, they're designed to failings. I'm going back to, you know, one of them in a while.
So any other discussion on this? So do we all agree that we should consider some adjustments?
I, I think, I think we could consider some adjustments, some discussion.
Yeah, some, you have a lot of overlap, there's some, um.
There's some overlap and then there's definitely, like I said, the fourteen foot height, odd effect that makes anybody applying after a lot for variance. I'm right off the bat where I, I don't know. No, like fourteen feet is such a small, I mean, dug eight foot sidewalls with, I, I, that was the thing, I was like, what do they expect me to build up? I wouldn't be able to park this further than I can park them anywhere, maybe, a small one. So definitely might be some discussion to change on.
Uh, would we put it, consider it as soon as June, when summertime people are starting to build more, I guess, or do we?
Till the next month, next meeting?
Yeah, I mean.
That's gone, gone since I've been here like that, so, I mean, I don't think anybody should make a rushed decision, everybody needs to think about it and, you know.
Yeah, one thing I'll miss out for a public hearing anyway and.
My opinion.
You're also going to run into areas, I'll take like town line or locally, like you were talking about lake frontage, um, yeah.
Might have, now, uh, one township has a different height.